Good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, October 15th. We'll call the Wright County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, a pretty full agenda here today. We'll begin with approving the minutes from 10:01. There's three different sets there and one on 10:08, two on 10:08. We can approve them collectively or individually. I'll stand for modifications.
Mr. Chair, an error to correct on the 10:01 board meeting under letter A.
Which one, 10:01, under the committee of the whole, the board?
Board meeting.
Board meeting, okay.
Letter A, third paragraph, where, third sentence where it starts out, and Dietrich's statement did not seem, that should be stricken, and it should say, Catchmark said that it didn't seem like a good use of time and taxpayer money. And that's all I had for that, Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Chair, I'd like to add a statement with that. As Commissioner Catchmark had clarified, he was not present at the meeting, so I'd like to apologize for that misstatement at the September 25th board meeting. I had stated, Catchmark had agreed to the proposal to eliminate the wellness program, the mentorship program, and the reductions of professional services from the sheriff's budget. So I'd like to correct that for the record, that it was Commissioner Vetch agreed with Commissioner Shane and Holland to make these additional cuts to the sheriff's office budget, just so that it's corrected.
We was not a discussion of, I'm not going to vote in approval of that. We agreed on a dollar amount, but not cuts to any specific program. So I just want to make sure that at the meeting, there was no specification of where within the sheriff's budget they were coming from, but there was a strictly just a dollar amount, and it was articulated that that was a dollar amount that was like to be reduced because of turnback dollars from previous budgets in trying to right that ship.
Mr. Chair, I disagree. It was stated and then clarified that it was $195,000, but it was stated at that meeting for those programs.
No, Mr. Chair, it was not, because I was the one that was clarifying.
There was more people in the room.
And no, it was not.
One at a time, one at a time.
There were more people in the room that that was stated. I didn't, it's the exact amount of $195,000 for those programs, and it was clearly stated and corrected by the interim administrator that we cannot designate that. I understand that. But it was $195,000 cut from the sheriff's department, department office budget.
Chairman, that it was stated at least three times by Commissioner Shane that I am not telling the sheriff how to cut his budget. And so that was clearly stated.
After she stated that those were the programs to cut.
That and a long list of other things.
No, I disagree.
Well, I'm going to recommend somebody call the question on this, and we'll just make a vote to approve. We'll just move forward with the approval of county board minutes from 10:01. We have the modification by Commissioner Catchmark, as well as there's a modification by Commissioner Dietrich.
I'll call the question.
You call the question. Then I need a, the question is, we have a motion, or we need a motion first to be able to move forward with it.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the correction that I made. I wasn't at the meeting, so I can't make a motion in good faith to something I wasn't there for. So if we need to part this out, I'll make a motion to approve that one piece. Does that work?
Yes, you can make a motion to approve the minutes with the modifications you stated.
Okay, then that's a motion.
There's a second by Commissioner Holland to approve the minutes from October 1st with the modifications made by Commissioner Catchmark, excluding the ones made by Commissioner Dietrich. Any discussion? Actually, the question is called, so at this time, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to correct.
The sign, pose, same sign. So are you abstaining?
No, I voted for it. That's a correction I agree with.
Okay, so then it stands, all right. Then the minutes from October 1st are approved.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to adjust that to include, I will withdraw the statement being the wellness program and mentorship program and professional service reduction to state that, to eliminate in additional $195,000 from the sheriff's budget. And that it wasn't Commissioner Catchmark, it was Commissioner Vetch that agreed to that amount.
I mean, if you want, I mean, I agree to it as far.
I'm correcting my misstatement when I had said Commissioner Catchmark.
Sure, sure. That is, if you want to correct that, that is totally fine, because I did, I did agree, as well as Commissioner Holland in that meeting, and as well as Commissioner Shane, as well as when we came forward into the room and the county board meeting on 10:01.
I'm correcting my misstatement.
Commissioner Catchmark agreed on it, but that's fine.
Mr. Chair, I'm just correcting my statement regarding Commissioner Catchmark.
That's fine. I mean, if she wants to make the motion, she has a motion by Commissioner Dietrich. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion fails for the lack of a second. All right. Now, at this time, moving forward to approve the minutes from 10:01, from the committee of the whole, the 10:01 revisers, the 10:08 workshop, and the 10:08 committee of the whole.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve those?
All right. Motion by Commissioner Holland.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion passes unanimous. Today's agenda, would anyone like to add or remove anything from today's agenda?
Yeah, Commissioner Vetch, I would like to add a discussion for, under B3, for MCIT.
So it's the, that would be an item that was a workshop agenda item.
Yeah, and it's, and our recommendations.
Yeah, so we have two options. Either we can deal with it, and as we go through the recommendations, if we can go through them one by one and make modifications that way, or we can pull it entirely from the recommendations and have another discussion on it.
Oh, well, amend the recommendations for workshop to discuss the MCIT delegate and the annual meeting on December 9.
So you want to?
That would be the only item that I.
Yeah, so what I'll say is, we'll just deal with it through the recommendations, and we'll just pull them out individually. Yep, that'd be the cleanest way. All right. So that'll stand for a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Shane. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. All right. Motion passes unanimous. Today's consent agenda, would anyone like to remove anything from today's consent agenda for further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to remove letter D, number 2, the retreat for HHS for discussion, please.
All right. And anyone else have any other items that'd like to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Motion by Commissioner Catchmark?
Approve the consent agenda with D2 removed.
Sure. Second by Commissioner Dietrich for the approval of the consent agenda, consent agenda removal of D2. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion passes unanimous. All right. Pulling the discussion from the Health and Human Services, item number 2, the approval of the mental health team retreat at the Nyack Park. Commissioner Catchmark.
Thank you. I had a question for, well, personnel or HR, but the commute from here to Nyack Park, is the staff paid for the drive time, which is about 20 miles? Can anybody speak to that? If it matters where they come from, or if they start here their workday?
They, we follow the rules as far as the travel time, so if they're, I don't recall the time of this, so 8:00 AM. So their travel time to the park before 8:00 AM would be, would not be part of their paid time. Joe, correct? And then we encourage staff, if they're here, to carpool, and we regularly get the big red van, so we can accommodate as many staff as possible. Given that it's starting right at 8:00 AM and ending at 4:30 PM, I'm assuming most staff would not have time before or after that they would be in the office, but their travel time, I don't believe would be included. I don't, don't catch me up on the rules regarding reimbursement for, for travel, for the paid travel. I don't know how that works if it's, I'm sure, we follow the rules, whatever the county rules are.
The policy is, is that if the location is further than it was from your house to the government center, from, is, if it's further to there, from your house to Nyack Park than it is from here to the government center, that would be, you'd get the difference.
From the government center to, yeah.
Yeah, you'd get the difference on that. If you went from your house to Nyack Park versus from here to the government center, if there was further distance to go to Nyack Park than it was from, to go to your home to your standard workplace, you'd get the differential, and I'll let Heather or Ryan confirm if that would be the truth of it. That's the way I would read the policy.
Read and say so.
I get one yes, no.
No, you're supposed to use the fleet car. Are you talking about the time or the mileage?
The mileage. I'm just, if you were, the policy reads that if you weren't able to use a county vehicle for whatever reason, you were, the policy would state that you should use a county vehicle, but
Correct.
in this situation where there's lots of people, not necessarily enough cars, they would get potentially the difference of the distance from their home to the government center to the home to Nyack Park, correct?
Correct, yes. What would happen is, we would pay the lesser, and we do not pay for commuter miles.
And we actually have a calculator that we built in HHS that you put in all these variables, and then it spits out the answer, whether it's more cost effective to be paid the mileage or, you know, so it all comes out in the wash. We're very diligent about how it all works, and we actually see very, I've seen very few mileage requests that would be counter to that, which department heads could approve, but nobody asked me to approve something that's counter to that, so I think it's all going very well, actually.
Good, thank you. Second question, how many people do you expect to be at this retreat, staff, people?
So the adult mental health team has approximately 10 staff without knowing what their, you know, time away from the office. They usually try to make sure they plan for a time when everybody would be available. So I would assume, you know, outside of vacations or, you know, approved time off or sick, they would all be there. We don't, they, they arrange for their absence with other coworkers that are in the office, and we have a plan for emergency situations, so that's all, that's all taken care of in the planning process for our retreat.
Okay, thank you. Then the rest is for conversation with the board here, but I looked at the agenda, and it's going to come up again, because I brought it up before, but we have all these auxiliary committees that meet around the county. And why this is relevant today, fellow board members, is if you look at the agenda, three of the items, 7, 9, and 11 already have auxiliary committees that meet, and as far as going to Nyack Park, the idea, philosophy was to have a campus where everybody was, was here, and now we're having people flee to Nyack Park. It's 20-mile drive, and I'm not seeing the other offices and departments continually coming for retreats, but what we hear from HHS is not enough staff, too much work, turnover. I'm not seeing the merits. The only way I'd really go for this is if that retreat was at this building, and if someone from administration would sit in and kind of monitor it, but I'm really not in favor, because we've got repetitive efforts here, in my mind, when we look at a committee list that is already in place and meets regularly, and that's part of this agenda. So that's my thoughts for the, I'll leave it for discussion here for my other board members.
Jamie, do you have some comments on it?
You know, just that other, you know, I think we're very well of the workload and aware of how we can best meet our clients' needs, and retreats have been a way that HHS historically and over a lot of time has been able to get, and now with remote work staff as well, where we have many staff, I think probably fully a third to a half of this team's staff are, there's a number of staff that work remotely, and we do find that retreats are a great opportunity to bring staff back together, to collaborate. I think there is a benefit for staff and being away, it's a beautiful building. I'm not going to say anything disparaging about, we love working here, or anything like that, but I think it does take you out of that work mode that your, that your mind is going to a different place, that you're being at this offsite place. It's seen as something for staff, I think, as a getaway that they can best get together and collaborate without all the headaches and all of the distractions and disruptions that happen right in the building. I think to the point of having the updates from those, from those three committees, I believe it truly is just an update. Those committees typically would have somebody from that team go to them, but not the whole team, so it's just an effort to communicate. Could it be communicated via email? I expect so. I think this is just an opportunity for staff then to weigh in where they're at with things. We've always been very, and I don't know if other departments bring all their retreat requests to the board. We bring it here in order for you to see it and for you to attend, should you want to attend. Standing invitation, any retreat, any open meeting is for any commissioner or anybody from the administration to attend with us at any time.
Thank you, Jamie. Mr. Chair, this is you making a motion separate of this? Are you? I appreciate the, appreciate your perspective on it. I think there's some valid points on both sides. I think there's a value to being offsite at times, as well as, I think there's, to your point, how often, when that should take place, it should also be very cognizant as well. So I will say at this point, I don't think they have a huge habit of doing these situations like this where they're offsite often, and they're not paying for these sites, so these sites are county facilities still. They're, the mileage on it, I have yet to see that any mileage has been turned in on it, so I don't think there's any cost other than, it really don't change, other than they're still going to have a retreat, whether it's in this building or there, they're not changing the staff time. I think there's definitely some more conversations, if you have valid points as to the topics and the need for it and the length of it, maybe there's some more discussion that needs to happen on that. I think that's a very valid perspective, and we can have more conversations about that down the road here.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I brought it up for discussion for the decision makers. If nobody wants to discuss, then go ahead and make the motion, but that was my point.
Commissioner Vetch, I do have to say, I feel like this comes on the agenda quite frequently. Could we at some time have a discussion about how many times these are off-campus? Because, and, and to what branch of HHS is going?
To my knowledge, teams, we have several teams that have not been on a retreat, especially our eligibility specialists, I don't think for years offsite for a number, probably since the pandemic. I, we have 20 teams, so I'm sure it does look like you're getting indicted with retreat agendas quite often, because we have a lot of teams. The teams often, over the course of the year, put things aside that they can deal with at the retreat, that they would have more capacity to go into things versus on a, you know, an hour-long meeting or something like that. So I don't think all of our staff go on a retreat annually, and I doubt if most of our staff would go on a retreat more than once a year. Sometimes if there's something big that's coming up, organizational changes, or something like that, it might be called for. And we've been back and forth again over, when do you bring a retreat schedule to the board? I believe that's all written in policy. If it's more than half a day, it would come to board. If it's going to be two to four hours, you know, it wouldn't come to board. So we're just trying to be prescriptive in how we provide the board with information about our staff's activities.
Mr. Chair, I'll just move it along for old time's sake. I'll just make a motion that we not approve the retreat.
You have a motion to not approve?
Correct.
The retreat on?
As stated.
As stated on 10/24.
Right.
Motion by Commissioner Catchmark. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for the lack of a second. At this point, I'll stand for another motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the retreat at St. Park. Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Holland, second by Commissioner Shane, to approve item D2 for the retreat on 10/24. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes for one.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we are moving on to our timed agenda items. We're a few minutes behind here, but Greg's waited ever so patiently there to adopt the resolution declaring Wright County's participation in Operation Green Light. And Greg's making his way to the podium to tell us more.
Good morning, board. Yes, thank you. My mission is complete. Other people are putting my board on, thanks, Mark, to put this one in for me. So, yeah, so this is Operation Green Light, started in 2021 in New York State, and then it's just kind of spread slowly across the country. NACO, National Association of County Officers, is that what it stands for, is sponsoring it, along with the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers, which is our kind of national organization. So they're sponsoring to try to get all the counties in the nation to turn their buildings or whatever green on Veterans Day. Just kind of a way to recognize they're currently serving our veterans and things like that. So there's a resolution before you to formally recognize it as a way to recognize veterans.
Commissioner Vetch, is that because green is for Army, and that's why they're not doing blue?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I mean, if it was true, joint operations are typically purple, but obviously in Minnesota, purple means something completely different. But no, yeah, so in this case, they use the color green to represent all of the military. Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
At this time, I'll stand to a?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Dietrich?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Holland to approve the resolution declaring Wright County's participation in Operation Green Light. All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, Commissioner Catchmark.
Aye.
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 Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
And now Mark Matice is on his way up here to request to set a time and date for a public hearing related to the fee schedule changes for 2024, or, well, for 2025's changes, but made in '24.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, as discussed at the workshop, annually, we set the fees for service schedule, looking to set that date as November 5th at 9:45.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And I had one thing to add. We talked about it at the meeting, but it didn't make the record, but Administrator Wilford has an update to the fee schedule as far as use of the training center by other agencies. That doesn't match the existing one, so I'd like to petition for that, that change, and if Administrator Wilford needs to clarify it for the board, he can, but they don't match up.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Catchmark, I think that's because it's part of the recommendations that are coming at the end of the board agenda. We haven't had formal, excuse me, board resolution, board motion yet, so.
Through the workshop, once those are automatically, the workshop recommendations are adopted, then it would, it would impose those changes into that new fee schedule for that public hearing on November 5th.
Mr. Chair, I don't think that, that particular one was noted in, in the record or anything. It was just, someone said we already had one, but Clay has a more current one from another facility that, well, he can speak to it, but I just didn't see it referenced. Can somebody else point it out in a recommendation?
And Mr. Chair and commissioners, if the request is that we include an updated fee schedule for the law enforcement training center in this fee schedule for the public hearing on the 5th, we can certainly do that following, per Administrator Kreiser's point, following that recommendation from the workshop, we can certainly build a revised schedule based on the other training facilities that we've reviewed, and then put that in for consideration on the 5th.
Because we didn't have, I guess, at the workshop, we weren't proposed one based on other facilities. That wasn't a discussion item, so to your point, we wouldn't be including.
Well, we wouldn't without a discussion here.
Yes, exactly.
Because the sheriffs, I was pointing out, they already have one, so why do we need another one? But Clay says, well, I have one for my own research, but that didn't make it to any record that I saw, so.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Catchmark, we were looking at imposing or instituting the fees from Maple Grove's facility into it. That was going to be our kind of baseline for what we're looking at.
Okay, well, what you were looking at, I didn't see a part of any record, so.
And Mr. Chair, Commissioner Catchmark, we'll make sure that that's updated.
Okay.
If no one has opposition. But we'll make sure it's in there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
November 5th, 9:45, Mr. Chair.
November 5th, 9:45. You making that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Shane, to set a public hearing for the fee schedule changes for 2025 at 9:45 on November 5th in this room.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, I'll work with interim administrator Kreiser on that fee schedule update before we publish to the paper.
All right. And if there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. All right. Public hearing set unanimously. And Chad's right behind him. We're going to adopt a resolution requesting a speed study.
Yeah. Good morning, commissioners. Asking to approve a resolution to request conduct a speed study from basically Buffalo to St. Michael on Cassau 35, in conjunction with the completion of the Cassau 35 project, St. Michael, extension to four lane, major change in the environment, rural to urban, two lane to four lane, and they like to study large corridors. We also installed the roundabout at the Buffalo High School, so there may be some changes in the area of Buffalo, so it's to request that study be completed per statute 169.14.
So with that?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Holland?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane to adopt the resolution for requesting the speed study on Cassau 35. Hearing no other discussion, resolution, Commissioner Shane.
Aye.
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 Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim's on his way up here, requesting to set a time and date for a public hearing related to the amendment changes to the dangerous dog ordinance, which we had just seen the other week.
Good morning, commissioners, yes.
And it looks like the request is just a few minutes before on the November 5th agenda. If that's still work for everyone, I'll stand for a motion.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Shane, second by Commissioner Holland to set the public hearing for the dangerous dog amendment or for ordinance on November 5th at 9:30 in this room.
All right, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. All right. Motion passes unanimous. And Chief Trichler's on his way up, approving another resolution to approve the 2025 Minnesota Public Safety Traffic Enforcement Grant.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. It's that time of year again to approve next year's TZD grant from the state for a total of $41,800. It's used for the dedicated enforcement of speed, move over law, distracted driving, DUI, all, all the major contributors to crashes on these highways.
All right. Any questions? Otherwise, I'll stand for that motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Dietrich, second by Commissioner Holland to approve the resolution for the 2025 for the 2025 Minnesota Department of Public Safety Traffic Enforcement Grant. Any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, I vote aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution passes unanimous. We're moving along swiftly here into the items for consideration. We have to authorize the signatures by the interim.
We have a 922 with IT Director Fomby to approve the Avea, I think, what you have, you probably have the same version of the agenda that I do, Mr. Chair, but was published as a 922 approved three-year Avea phone system maintenance and support.
Oh, see, so, okay. I printed out, I printed out a wrong one, used that wrong one.
I did the same thing, Mr. Chair.
I should have just looked up here on the screen. I would have noticed that, see?
Attacked publicly, my agenda item comes off. I see how it's going to be.
It's a Navy thing, right?
I'd like to recognize the Navy's 249th birthday on October 13th, by the way. Thank you very much.
All right. So, Mr. Fomby, we have to approve the three-year Avea phone system maintenance.
Phone system maintenance contract. We have this with a number of our large pieces of equipment. It's basically keeps a expert on call for us, gives us a statement of work that requires them in a critical situation to respond within 15 minutes and resolve within four, things of that nature. We have it for all of our major equipment. We were on the phone with Cisco for 12 hours on Thursday and Friday fixing a problem at the attorney's office. So, switch problem. So this is something we do regularly. It's just now just over the limit for Board. So I'm free for any questions. I do not think this includes 911. Hold on, let me, Shirley, you're watching. Does this include 911? No, it does not. And don't call me Shirley. That's weird.
All right. Any discussion, Board members? Otherwise, I'll stand for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thanks, Matt, for coming in. I read the background on it, and then I looked at job descriptions of same or similar roles that, and I saw one name on here under the oracle, well, the requisition, and that led to a job description for systems engineer work. Could you tell us how many system engineers that fit this job description we have, or you have?
Fit our job description? All of them.
Well.
Fit the job description of the actual service contract? None.
But the systems engineer that I'm holding here, it starts out, performs difficult, skilled technical work assisting in the planning, design, testing, deployment, and troubleshooting of enterprise data, et cetera. But how many people do you have that, that do that work?
They all do that. This work is very, very specialized. This, somebody to fit this skill set, we'd probably have to pay $200,000 a year. That's why we actually do these service contracts. Nobody has these type of people on staff because it's not worth it. So the service contract gives you availability to them, but since we don't need them 24/7 on staff, the service contract, it's kind of like a expert timeshare, if you want to think it that way. We dip into it when necessary, but nobody would ever keep somebody with this narrow of a skill set on staff because it would be a waste of time and money.
Because the alternative would be if you didn't have the service contract, you would be put in queue and you'd be paying a higher rate when you called in and you may wait
Like we can have.
48, 72 hours until somebody would be available from Avea. Where this puts us as a, I'm going to say a priority client, you're contracted with them, that they agree with this contract to meet your needs within a, I'm going to use the word reasonable time?
Yes. This is like having a mechanic and having a mechanic that can work on an F Formula One race car. Those guys are going to command a higher salary than the guy that you go get your transmission replaced by. So this is the Formula One race, race car mechanic, and nobody's going to keep them on staff.
Okay. So the $71,000 per year, we pay whether we use them or not.
That is true.
And what I read in your summary was potentially one to two times a month that you were seeing?
That's the actual direct support. They also do monitoring. They check alarms. They do updates. They push patches, things of that nature, too. That's just actually having the expert on the phone one or two times a month, but that's a fairly standard average. The rest of the time, they continue to do work for us, monitor and things of that nature.
The bigger part is the maintenance part of it isn't. The phone support is the smaller aspect of the contract, and more so of it is the maintenance and the upgrading of the system.
This is kind of like, I mean, elevators. You have an elevator, you always have a service contract to the elevator, because when the elevator goes down, there's somebody trapped in it. You don't want to have to wait two weeks to get somebody out to get them out, so you have a service contract for that. So when the phone system goes down, for example, I don't know if I'm allowed to say this. I was at the Jack-o'-lantern spectacular, which was absolutely amazing. I don't know if that's advertising or not, but nevertheless, the entire time I was on the phone, because I can't remember if it was this last October 31st or the one before, the phone system went down over in dispatch. They were having problems, and it took about three hours to get it fixed. But that was an example, it wasn't 911, it was dispatch, but that was an example of a critical issue, and they got it fixed within four hours, which is the statement of work. So that's when we dip into them.
So the last three years, did we have the same company?
Yes.
Do we have any kind of report about how often we use them so that we could kind of calculate how much per visit and if?
Well, it's not just a pure visit. There's also the monitoring and the patching, but I don't have anything available at the moment. I'd have to look into that, but like I said, it's, it's roughly, roughly once a month, maybe twice, depending, but that's a fairly standard dip into the expert sort of thing.
And I, and I'm just asking lots because this is 210,000 that were locked in for three years, and I'm just looking for detail and history to say, yes, this is working great versus an on-call type service where it's an as needed, when needed, and then you?
Nobody offers that for this sort of thing. All of the, in the IT world, it's always a service contract. Nobody really offers on-call. They just don't. And this is one of those things that is just kind of the way the industry works.
They got us cornered on it. I, I'm with.
Well, the kicker is.
Like of a lot of softwares and a lot of hardware items that you, you buy this company's stuff and they, you want us to maintain it, you, you need us to maintain it, and you're going to sign into this contract, otherwise you're, good luck.
Well, if it, if we, we could easily not do it, but then the phone system goes down and our bargaining position diminishes greatly when it's not working at all, and we absolutely have to have them, we'd probably end up paying 200 to 300,000 for one go. So it's better to pay the 70 in a year and have that support available. If this went down hard, we'd be in a mess of trouble.
How, how hard would it be to add enough training to a staff and a job description that they would be able to take that on?
The cost benefit analysis isn't there because the expertise level that's generally required is so high. That's why they do the service contract. Nobody would ever have a person like this on staff unless they, I'm guessing Cisco probably has one or some of the giant corporations, but in general, nobody would do this unless they were huge, billion-dollar corporations.
They wouldn't even have the access to the continued education that Avea has to their own internal contract workers, so that even if you hired them on staff, they'd still always be a day late and a dollar short because they wouldn't have the continuing ed that the internal employees would have through Avea on their own system.
If we trained somebody to do this, they would immediately leave us and get a $200,000 position elsewhere. There's no way we could either train for it. I don't think we could train them up to, up to snuff. And once we did, they could immediately demand much higher salaries than we could ever consider paying. A lot of people in this room combined.
Thank you. I didn't have any more questions, Mr. Chair.
I could extol the virtues of the Navy for a little while longer, if you like. I could make a motion.
That we approve the three-year Avea phone system maintenance and support for the three years.
All right.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Holland, second by Commissioner Shane. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say thank you for in-depth conversation on this yesterday because I, too, had a lot of those conversations as well. So thank you for the time yesterday.
We could also talk about deuterium. No one? Okay, fine. You know, I give and I give.
No other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Motion passes unanimous.
I'll be here all week.
All right. Now we'll go back to the items for consideration. First one would be to authorize the signatures by the Board Chair and the County Administrator for the Monticello orderly annexation agreement.
Mr. Chair, thank you. This has come up from a systematic review that was started by the City of Monticello and Monticello Township. They've been in an orderly annexation agreement for a number of years. I want to say pushing 20 probably. And this is just an update to it. They did work with me and my legal capacity and added some terms that are required for joint powers agreements as far as indemnification, also requiring that the entity get an attorney. And I've also discussed with them the possibility of getting insurance either through MCIT or the league. I don't know which one they are opting with, but that's, that's a discussion I've had, at least with the organization. What you have before you is the final product that I think was worked out by the township and the city. And as you know, Mr. Chair, you're, I guess we can call, refer to you as kind of the tie-breaking vote because you're the fifth person who chairs these meetings, and it's two people from the township, two people from the city, and you're kind of sitting in the middle, I think, of every one of the meetings. But this is the, the final product. Glad to see it's still working for the township and the city and that they're working so collaboratively. One change I do need to note is on the map. For what you have in the packet, there has been a slight change to the map. The bottom line, starting in the southeast corner, you have that little dip that goes down over Pelican Lake, that dips straight over to Highway 25 as a straight line. There's no more going up and then over. We have corrected that in the signature packet, but clearly what's online has now been updated. So just want to let the Board know about that one minor change to the map, but again, all the parties agree to it, so.
The, I don't know what you call them, negotiations or the meetings between the city and the township went very, very well. This orderly annexation agreement will serve both the city and the township well for a number of years, as well as to your point on the, some of the legal pieces. From a litigation standpoint, those have been dealt with and mitigated between the city and the township. So it's great to see because sometimes these orderly annexation agreement discussions can go on for years potentially, and glad to see that this one went very, very well in a very good relationship, working relationship between the city and the township. So I would ask Board members to support this.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Holland, second by Commissioner Shane to authorize signatures by myself and the county administrator for the Monticello orderly annexation agreement. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Motion passes unanimous. Now we have to set a date for the salary discussions for the county attorney and the county sheriff. Suggested dates, administration?
Suggested date was November 19th, 2024, after the board meeting. We have confirmed with the sheriff and the county attorney, and they're both available.
Pardon me?
19th.
19th. So we'd be looking at like a 10, 10:30-ish?
Probably, we'd probably notice it at 10:30.
Yeah. 10:30 on November 19th. Is that work good for Board members? I'll stand for a motion.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Shane, second by Commissioner Holland to set a committee of the whole to discuss the county attorney and sheriff's salary at 10:30 on November 19th. All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Motion passes unanimous. Items for consideration, the committee of the whole ARP was the first one here. The recommendation was pretty simple. We were just going to actualize those funds on the Schroeder Park redevelopment project.
So. I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation for that item.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Dietrich.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Catchmark to approve the committee of the whole recommendations regarding ARP from October 1st. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes unanimous. All right. Next would be the October 1st, the revisers' recommendations. So the first one was the, set the public hearing for the dangerous dog, which has already been done. Then there was the others, just discussion on the foul, the chicken, chicken ordinance piece.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we discussed the chicken ordinance, but there's no action on that one today. That's, that's having further discussion, but as you see in the second bullet point, the committee is recommending that after the public hearing, you adopt the dangerous dog ordinance. So clearly, that's not, a little premature at this point because we had to have a public hearing first.
And the other one's informational only, so I don't necessarily know that we have to, but I guess we, if you have one just for ceremonial reasons, may approve the recommendations from October 1st, which you've already kind of done already, since the other one's informational.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Dietrich, second by Commissioner Holland. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes unanimous. All right. Now we're on to the workshop agenda items. Largely, a lot of them, items one, two, and three are informational only. The ERP check-in was really to, you know, direct staff to detail specific plans to address the four pillars and bring forward to the Board at a later date for the ERP check-in, so kind of just a staff direction piece. Then the public survey was mostly informational, but some directive by the staff were directed to prepare communications with the public summarizing the survey and results and recommendations would be shared once the Board, what we would pre, share with the public, with the Board. Then there is the recommendations from the department moves. The Board's consensus was to move forward with the department moves, granting authorizations and signatures. That is on that finance movement and projects within the building. Let me know if there's any of these ones that we want to move out. Then there's the fee schedule review. That one, we already set that public hearing, so that item has already been accomplished. And we have the out-of-county agency use on the training facility. And there is the discussion on that and to Commissioner Catchmark and Administrator Kreiser's recommendation, then that's going to be adopted on that, well, potentially adopted after the public hearing, which has already been set. Then there's the legislative items. We've brought forward a number of different items and suggested a meeting in the first week of December with legislators based on their availability.[1588.88] a meeting in the first week of December with legislators based on their availability. And then there was the recommendation to direct staff for the 2025 score funding for the November 12th board workshop, to bring back some different options or recommendations on that. And then we had another added item on there, which I thought we had on here, was the MCIT delegate.
Mr. Chair, I was looking at the minutes. That was discussed as number 11, Commissioner Updates.
Okay, that's what.
It's discussed under there in the minutes.
And then there was the recommendation from the, to appoint a member to the MCIT. So we'll do that one separately, since there was some, some discussion on that. So with that, I'll ask somebody to approve the recommendations as printed here from the October 8th workshop.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Commissioner Shane, second by Commissioner Catchmark to approve the workshop recommendations. Any further discussion?
What about the MC-
The MCIT one, will we deal with that after the October 8th committee of the whole? We'll do a separate item on it.
Okay.
All right. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, workshop agenda items are, recommendations are approved unanimously. Then we had the committee of the whole from October 8th for the out-of-county agency use on the training facility. The recommendation was administration to move forward with drafting a pilot program for out-of-county agency use of the training facility to include a license agreement, fee schedule, and identifying a partnering, identifying partnering agencies. And then there was the other recommendation, the Training Center memo of agreement, which was to, for administration to send a letter to the FBI asking for additional funding increasing due to the cost of operating the facility since the original agreement was made.
Mr. Chair, as far as that, that first item, aye, the out-of-county use, I think we should consider being consistent with booking that facility like other parts of the compound here with conference rooms and such, that admin would have access to a current schedule of who's using that facility, like a lot of other places around this facility. And the second part is, it was spoken about Meeker using, already planning to use the facility. There was already conversations between myself and staff that there would be a fee, but someone else told them that there wouldn't be a fee. We need to charge Meeker to use the facility this fall. And I want to make sure that that's part of the recommendation, that we can't offer, start out offering to an out-of-county agency free use of the facility.
So, and I guess here's kind of where the quandary, because I think to your point, going forward, and, because the fee schedule hadn't existed, I'm guessing to your original conversation with them. So this was a gracious invitation that you made on the original conversations with Meeker. So to that point, for maybe the first time, we may have to have a discussion about, the first time, but I think ongoing usage of it, especially once we have adopted a fee schedule for it, it should be, and they rightfully should be charged for it ongoingly. But I don't know where the conversations without a fee schedule in place, what conversations the sheriff has had with Meeker in that interim period of time. That, that puts us in a little bit of a quandary. I don't necessarily know that it's an exuberant dollar amount. I think it's probably less than probably $600 for the one-time usage on it, I'm guessing. I don't know.
Mr. Chair, thank you. As you know, we just created the document for the fee schedule. I fully support the board's efforts in charging outside agencies to use this range. We are blessed. We have a beautiful facility. I fully support the board's initiative on that. We have worked diligently, but as you can see, we're still directing staff to come up with said agreement. It doesn't exist yet. Meeker County is scheduled to train at our training center tonight and Thursday night. And so that's why I requested another meeting this morning after this meeting to discuss that. This was an agreement. Meeker County currently has a conflict with their current facility. They need low-light inclement weather the fall shoot. They're scheduled tonight and Thursday night. And I would ask that the board would support me in the ability of meeting with another sheriff and, like you said, making a gracious invitation to get their training needs met while still supporting a relationship. I just want to remind the board, we are dependent upon our partners. And again, going forward, when this agreement is in existence and everything is done, I fully support the efforts. But right now, we're dependent on these relationships too. I think I just figured out the math real quick. Between tonight and Thursday night, it's between $300 and $400. To me, the relationship with another partner or bordering sheriff's office is more important than $300 or $400 worth of revenue that we might get. They're scheduled for a few hours tonight and a few hours on Thursday night.
Well, I will say that I think the free sampling and getting them out there and using the facility will yield them to want to have a longer relationship with us. So I, I think to, to create some bad or ill will in the short term to get $600, $700, but in the front side of it, we could create a long-term relationship where that could yield way more than that. I, I think it would be really foolish and shortsighted of us to try and impose a last-minute fee on them to get $600. It's just, it's going to come across very petty. And I feel like getting them in there on a free sampling of the facility will yield a long-term relationship, so.
Even if their current issue with Litchfield is resolved and they would have access to that range, if they come out here and see what we have to offer, if I was going home as the sheriff, I would say, if it's going to cost a couple thousand dollars a year to have access to a facility like that, I would pull that trigger in a hot second. If I had board's, board approval to do so, it would be a no-brainer. And so, again, this is about relationships. Commissioner Catchmark, you said it in the committee meeting last week. We have a mantra in Minnesota, no sheriff stands alone, right? We do this oftentimes. I don't want to, I don't want to talk about past experiences, but Alina Clinic and the incident in St. Michael, I cannot tell you the tens of thousands of dollars that was poured into Wright County because of our partnering agencies and the expenses occurred. And not one single one of those sheriff's office even asked for anything in return. The only expense we had out of that was $9,000 for a transmission line that I offered to pay for from a St. Cloud vehicle that was damaged in the, in the assault. So, tens of thou, tens of thousands of dollars.
And you spoke in the committee meeting that you had spoke to Meeker Sheriff Cruz at a conference recently, wasn't it?
Yep. Three, three weeks ago, we were at a retreat together.
Okay. And thanks for clarifying the timeframe. Without knowing what I'm going to tell you, Mr. Chair, I can see why you'd say this is petty and this is this. But when I tell you the rest of the story, that Administrator Clay and myself have been in correspondence with Meeker for a couple of months, with an understanding, are you interested in using this facility, but there would be a fee? We, because you didn't want to talk about it until we knew if there was people interested. You said that twice. We know there's people interested and we weren't offering it for free. So now, as recent as three weeks ago, the two sheriffs get together and a gentleman's agreement is done, which we have already experienced out there. We don't have anything laid out, as they have said, there's no agreement in place, but we made a gentleman's agreement with another agency to use a $9 million facility. So this, it already started with the groundwork that there would be a fee. The sheriff is the one that offered it for free, knowing that there is a fee schedule, which they reminded us of at the committee meeting the other day. So I say, we should stick to the original negotiation, the decision makers and administration. It is a Wright County Training Center. And there was a, we were working towards this. There was, the two got together and made the agreement for free. That's, that's not our problem.
Commissioner Catchmark, the sheriff was unaware that the Wright, that Wright County had even reached out. Wright County, Clay, apparently was reaching out to the chief deputy, making offers and talking about, would there be interest? He's like, of course there would be interest. He had no idea. It was at that same retreat, I asked Brian Cruz, because it was a meeting before that, where there was discussion about outside agencies using our facility. I asked Sheriff Cruz at that meeting, he's like, ah, they haven't reached out to us. Monday, after he got back to the office, he called me and said, well, apparently they had. Because I came back to my team and said, is anybody talking to anyone at Wright County? And his chief deputy said, I have been. Well, then Brian, Sheriff Cruz, asked him, who are you talking to? He's like, I think it's a captain with the sheriff's office. He went back and looked at the email signature, and he was talking to Clay from admin. Sheriff Cruz is like, why are you talking to someone from admin when you should be talking to someone from the sheriff's office? So the way that all of this information has gone out, I can't speak to that. That sheriff can't speak to that. He had a request of us, and we can fulfill the need to get their training done. And again, the form does not exist at this point to, to have an agreement. Their training is scheduled for tonight and Thursday night.
Here's, I mean, this is purely a situation where the right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing, and it's making us poor salesmen of our facility. At the end of the day, to both of your points, it's all relationship-based. If we want to promote and sell this facility, we have to be on the same page on this. And it's about, in my, if I, my first inclination is build the relationship first and then come up with, especially when, I mean, we're not talking about them using it in egregious amount of time here. We're talking like literally $600, potentially less than that. To me, it's, this is a relationship that we want to build for a long time, and we want them in there. And to me, to sour it over a few hundred dollars isn't worth it. So that's where I stand on it. I understand your point that you've been having conversations and Clay's been having conversations, as well as the sheriff and right and left hand didn't know what they're doing. That's all the more reason I feel like we need to take the higher road on this and, and work on the relationship versus trying to get a few hundred bucks out of them.
Mr. Chair, the, the fee schedule is one thing, and I don't know, if you haven't seen the current one, I don't know how you're coming up with a few hundred. You don't even know how many people are actually going to come and shoot.
Based on the hours of renting, and that's where, I'm basing it on the idea that there are two nights for maybe three hours each night-ish.
But, but the other piece is, we all should appreciate an actual agreement that the risk management has dealt with, because I thought we learned our lesson with gentleman's agreements, and here we have another one. And you can talk about the merits and relationships and, and all of that. But what if people go there and they leave with more holes than they came? There, there's things that could happen, but it's just the business side, we didn't have the right people drawing up an order, even if we want to be good partners. But I, I just.
It's another sheriff's office. They're all being paid. They would be covered by their own workers' comp and their own liability insurance. Obviously, if there was damage to our facility, we will have a staff member there. And obviously, we would know about that, and they would have to take care of that.
Commissioner Vetch, maybe, maybe a way to do this would be similar to when you said you paid for the $8,000 for the line or whatever when they came to help. How about we just take it out of your budget, because it's our facility. You pay the $600 or whatever we deem would be a good price to pay. You can still offer it to Meeker for free, and then we're still, we're still in line, because basically, we don't have Barry going around saying, well, I'll give you a free building permit, you know, just because you're a buddy and we want to, you know, get good relationships. I think we own the facility. It should, we should, just like everything else, we should have a fee for it. So I have no problem if it wants to come out of your budget.
That would be just fine, Commissioner. I'll pay for it, and I'll work on relationships if you guys are not here.
And, Mr. Chair, I think this still goes to the point that there should be accountability on the usage schedule out there, because this schedule was not any place that anybody could look and see somebody was out there. If we wouldn't have talked about it today, we wouldn't know.
So, and I don't want to make this more convoluted than it already is, because this is half the problem, is where we have administration and the sheriff's office having conversations, and the right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing. I think there may be some value to your perspective, but I don't want us to just, right here, make some rash decision. I would say was have another discussion on what that looks like and hone out something. I just don't want to just pass some recommendation here that just deems administration in charge of scheduling, or the sheriff's in charge of scheduling universally on it. I want to make sure that there's a good, robust discussion on it, so that going forward, we don't have this issue. I think it both, I think we all want the same thing on it. The sheriff does, as well as the board. We want utilization of the facility to the most of its ability with maintaining the ability to train our, our deputies first and foremost. And we also want to be able to leverage the usage agreements and being able to get funding. The, so we're both trying to go in the same direction here. I just feel like the conversation is making it look quite the contrary. So.
Mr. Chair, may I recommend that we move forward with what's already planned, come back with an updated use agreements and fee schedule, so that we're all on the same page moving forward.
I, I think that that's the goal here. I think I agree with that. And I think we'll have another discussion on scheduling, on who's the master scheduler of it, and who has access to that information. So I think that's a piece that we have to sort out here.
We would obviously have to control the scheduling, but I could care less. If the county comes up with a program and everybody in the county can see it, I could care less. But obviously, we have to maintain the usability, because we know the schedule. We know what our needs are, and we certainly don't want to book ourselves out of our own facility. I could care less who has access to it.
And Sheriff, that was my point, where I wanted to make sure we weren't making arrests. This isn't, this isn't here in this room that was going to have ill effects.
I would appreciate that.
And, Mr. Chair, Sheriff, I don't, I think that it could be admin access only. I'm not, I don't think we're asking for the whole county to be able to see it. I don't think that's necessary unless you want to do that, but.
Well, no, I, I'm just saying, if there's any question on transparency, I could care less what point you're trying to make. I don't care who's got access to it. We would need to control the scheduling, but I could care less who has access to it, Commissioner.
I think we can have.
I think it's fair for you to hear from me, that I'm not looking for everybody at home to see who's out there today, but for at least third floor to access. And if someone has a question here, they could find somebody here that could answer.
Administrator Kreiser, I think you can work with the sheriff to kind of work out some way that facilitates the board's desire and need to be able to have some, I guess, accountability on the usage, as well as then being able to make sure that the autonomy of the sheriff to be able to schedule his training is necessary is met.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, we, we can work with the sheriff's office and IT and create a shared calendar, where the sheriff's office would be the administrator of it, but other users could have access to it. We can make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I think Commissioner Dietrich made a motion. I'm not sure if there was a second to it, but I remember a motion being made.
So a motion by Commissioner Dietrich, and I want to make sure that was to direct staff to work with the sheriff in developing that fee schedule, which we are, are doing, and then to-
And usage agreements.
And the usage agreements. And then to, the delegation of administration to work on creating that calendar.
Agreed.
All right. All right. And that's a motion by Commissioner Dietrich.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holland. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Now we have the MCIT delegation.
Mr. Chair, there was one more recommendation for the FBI.
Oh, the FBI, oh, sorry, we didn't make a, oh.
The letter, Mr. Chair.
Yes, we need a motion to approve the recommendations. I guess, because even this one here wasn't even necessarily, this last motion didn't really accomplish the recommendations from, well, I guess it did kind of.
We discussed and modified it. A motion was made and passed.
Laterally approved it. So the letter to the memo of understanding to the FBI.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I got a, a comment after what we had heard at that past meeting and some other meetings on this, that I think we should put a deadline in there, 30 days for a response from the FBI. And is the, the ask 332,00232?
Mr. Chair, that's what I amended it to.
Okay.
After the last discussion, where you wanted me to incorporate everything into it.
Okay, and I can clarify why I would push for a 30-day deadline if board members are interested. If not, then that, then I would make a motion for that dollar amount and have a 30-day deadline for a reply. And if we don't get one, then we revisit the order and, and convene again as a board.
I'll second that.
So at this point, you would be, I guess, let's go a little bit for, because, okay, 30 days gets you to November 15th. You're too late to make the agenda for November, November 19th. So at that point, I'd say, put a deadline of, in my mind, the next board meeting would be December 3rd, so you could set a deadline of like the 26th. And you still have time, if you want, for the last two board meetings of the year.
And that's fine. I mean, this is no surprise or secret. We've had conversations with them.
If you want to do 30 days, I mean, that's fine. I, I just know that the way these, these things go through in the, in the security and vetting of letters and mails and there, I don't necessarily know how fast it gets to somebody's desk and whether they do meet on it or don't meet on it. I just, you want to be able to articulate that you gave ample amount of time.
All right, that's fine. So you want to set the date of?
Mr. Chair, if I could actually recommend November 22nd. The 28th and 29th are Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving. So the agenda will probably be published on either the 26th or 27th, given that timeframe. So if we do the 22nd.
Okay, I'll make a motion to recommend for that dollar figure, requesting payment for 332, 232, with the deadline of November 22nd for a reply.
All right.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Catchmark, second by Commissioner Holland, to set the, the letter out, but with a, requesting a response by November 22nd. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
All right, motion passes 4-1. All right, now moving on to the MCIT delegate appointee. This was an item that was done under the, at the workshop discussed under Commissioners' Updates. As it became aware to us prior to that workshop, that we would need to reappoint a new member of the board or staff to serve as the voting delegate on the MCIT, our voting delegate for MCIT.
Yeah, Chair Vetch, I, so, I know that it was kind of a hasty, you know, thrown in the air type thing at the workshop. And since that time last week, I was in St. Cloud for a public, public health retreat. And one of the members of the board, Commissioner Marsha Ward from Winona County, and I had a discussion, and she, she said she'd love for me to vote for her. She's up for a vote. So at that meeting, I would like to be the representative, so I can in fact vote for her. But on the other hand, she also said that it would be nice to have somebody from Wright County fill the seat, where they have an open seat. And she said, she, they would prefer to have an auditor, because they lost an auditor in that position, and it's financial. So I have since spoken to our auditor, Lindsay, who would be, would be interested in, in applying for that position to be voted in on, on the December 8th, I think.
December 9th, Commissioner.
9th.
At 4 o'clock, I believe.
So with that said, I was wondering if the board would consider me being that voting member for that day, the 9th, and then going forward with recommending Lindsay as- And then going forward with recommending Lindsay as a, a delegate for the MCIT.
Mr. Chair, I had volunteered for a reason to be on that board or to be the delegate. Well aware and have attended meetings before and follow along with MCIT and their program and actually working with risk management as well to understand the needs of Wright County and being represented on there as well, not another commissioner from another county. So I would maintain that I, in the workshop, was designated as the delegate and that you could be the alternate for sure, but I believe moving forward, that was the agreement.
Mr. Chair.
There's other, this is regarding a commit, this is regarding, there's a position on the board.
Right.
There's three positions open on the board.
Right.
A, B, and C, or whatever they are. And so.
And that's.
That, that would be different. Right, I'm talking about the delegate position in regards to the workshop. Whether Lindsay applies, that would be great if that's your intent.
Yeah. You were saying that you support the Lindsay piece, you just.
Yeah, I always told you the delegate. That's the workshop.
On the 9th.
Recommendation was, was for, and I volunteered at the time to do that because I wanted to be the delegate for that position.
Yeah, so just to recap, because it was kind of something that was thrown at us last minute, to Commissioner Holland's point that we, and she is stating now that she wants to throw her hat in the ring for it, as well as the, the quick consensus at the workshop was, you were the only one at that time had thrown your hat in the ring for it. There was a, a recommendation to appoint Commissioner Diedrich at that time, since everyone else at the time didn't have any prior knowledge or, or interest in it. Commissioner Holland at this point is throwing her interest into it, is she's just articulated.
That specific meeting. Yeah, just for that specific meeting.
Just for that, you're, that's, you don't want to be the voting delegate ongoing.
Wouldn't Lindsay be the voting?
No, well, no. She would be, she would be a board member. You would, you could delegate her to be the voting member after the fact at that point, or you could delegate Lindsay to be the voting member, MCIT voting member for us right now and be the, and run for the board, which maybe probably be the better route, is to appoint Lindsay to be our voting member on MCIT and then have her run for it. That would be the, probably the cleanest, best route.
I think it's a good fit, just for the fact that they need an auditor and she has a, she understands, you know, what Wright County needs. She is our auditor. So I would, I would say that would, I would recommend having Lindsay be in those, that two roles, those two roles, especially because Marsha asked specifically for an auditor.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
All right, you have a motion by Commissioner Holland, second by Commissioner Shane, to support our finance director, Lindsay Meyer, to apply to be on the MCIT board, as well as to be our voting delegate for MCIT.
And she would be our auditor.
Well, that, that title falls underneath that same piece, yeah. Auditor, finance director, treasurer, whole bunch of things. All right.
Mr. Chair, so the motion on the table right now is to change the recommendation and designate Lindsay Meyer as the primary? Are we doing?
I'm not sure. Why, can I, is this up for discussion at this point? Because I'm wondering the why Lindsay would have to be both. I could vote for Lindsay as the delegate. I'm not quite sure why that would be a conflict. I will be attending the meeting.
But she's already going down there at.
It's at the AMC conference and I will be there.
But the subsequent meetings are in St. Paul.
Right.
Every, the second.
I understand when they are. But this is for the annual meeting, for the, the voting of new members onto the board and the delegates vote to get those members on the board.
It's just more the, I mean, I, it looks the best from, if you're going to solidify people, why wouldn't you have the person that you're recommending to be on the board be your voting delegate? But that's, that's my own perspective on it. But unfortunately, I wish we would have had a little bit more time to pause and think about a methodology when this came up to the workshop last week. So we kind of came up to a real hasty recommendation real quickly without having really thought it out. We have a motion at this point to appoint Lindsay Meyer as our delegate to be the voting member for MCIT for Wright County, as well as to support and encourage her to apply to be on the MCIT board. That is the motion that is out there and seconded. Is there any other discussion points?
Mr. Chair, I believe there's an alternate that can also be designated. At this point, I would, I would add that perhaps I would like to be the alternate and add that to the motion, please.
Mr. Chair, can I call the question?
Sure. We, the question's been called for the motion in a second. At this time, we have, the question's called. The motion stands out there is to appoint Lindsay Meyer as the MCIT delegate, voting delegate for Wright County, and to encourage her to apply for the MCIT board. Hearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
Passes four, one. We can have an option of a delegate at this time if we want. We do not have to, or we can deal with it at a later date if necessary.
An alternate.
All right, I'm sorry, not delegate, an alternate. If we want, we can deal with it at this time, or we can wait and fulfill it at a later date.
I would make a motion to be the alternate for the MCIT board.
Motion by Commissioner Diedrich to appoint herself to the alternate role on the MCIT as a alternate voting member for the MCIT.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Ketchmark. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes five, zero. All right. At this time, we have concluded all of the items on today's agenda.
Mr. Chair, do you have any comments from the commissioners? Do you have, are we going to do updates from commissioners or anything?
If you have a, a quick.
I just, I just need clarification. Administrator Kreiser, I just need clarity from the comments. There seems to be disagreement from that budget retreat. You were present and what was said. I would like you to clarify the comments that were said at the budget retreat regarding the $195,000 additional cut from the sheriff's office, please. What was said and how it was said, please. No, I'm asking administrator, I'm asking the administrator to comment. He was there and.
He was a neutral party.
There's obviously a disagreement. I would like the administrator, he's to advise what was said and how you corrected what was said.
Mr. Chair, member Diedrich, there, there was discussion brought up as to the dollar amount and how it got calculated. And I, you were absolutely correct, I clarified what the statutory authority is of the sheriff with his budget and clarified that you can cut the dollar amount, but not a specific program.
She had read off her list of each of those items and the total dollar amount at the meeting. Yes.
Commissioner Vetch, I have a question of, of Administrator Kreiser. When, when we had this discussion in a retreat, did you and staff go over and tell the sheriff all the items that were cut, or did you just give him a dollar amount?
So at this time, I don't see, Commissioner Holland, if you at least give me the moment here, I don't see what we're, this doesn't have any business to attend to or anything that would pertain to staff. So at this time, I think I would adjourn the meeting, just to be a good fiduciary of staff time. We can have offline discussions on this, as it's already been discussed in a public forum. So at that point, I would encourage you to have discussions offline. If there's a, otherwise, at this time, I'm going to adjourn the county board meeting. All right, so county board, board meeting adjourned at 10:15.